Not too angry.
Took Wednesday off somewhere.
Are we starting?
On Wednesday. Oh, I think it's eight o'clock.
It's getting real close. Jeremy said we gotta get the show on the road. Good evening. Do a, do a mic check. How are you up, out there?
Can you hear me okay?
Uh, need a little volume.
So we gotta get the show on the road.
Good evening. Do a, do a mic check. How are you up, out there? Got a little delay. Over there, cause I keep hearing myself saying the same thing. It's not getting any better. No, it's not.
Second time around.
Second time around, you said the same thing. Oh my.
Can you hear each other?
I can hear y'all. Can you hear me?
No.
No, you're. Kate, you know which one to. Crank up over there.
It's turned all the way up.
We're really quiet. We can hear.
Yeah. I can speak really loudly if I need to.
Well, as we approach our start, went to. Recite, the public comments are always welcome and I invite you to sign up if you wish to speak tonight. I recognize those signed up during citizens remarks section of the council's agenda. Citizens who wish to speak to council but neglect to sign up in advance may be permitted to address the council during citizens remarks and comments agenda item, but only at the discretion of the mayor. When speaking to the council, ask that these guidelines be followed. Once recognized to speak, please come forward, stand at the podium and for the record state your name. And if you are a resident of Lexington, Virginia, if you want to be contacted after this meeting, please provide your contact information to the clerk. Please make your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage the audience. Please be brief, state your position and provide facts. Please provide written statements and or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to the council and the city manager. Debate is prohibited. This is a time for you to share your thoughts and ideas with your city council. Please speak clearly as we want to hear what you have to say. And I, at the advice of my, of our attorney, offer those guidelines for. Addressing council as we customarily do before the meeting. And with that, unless there's an objection, I will call the meeting to order and welcome one and all. First item is if you all please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, do we need to, uh, it's only for the council members we need to vote to allow them to attend virtually.
Correct.
Very good. Getting in that groove and remembering. Thank you. Uh, next item is consideration of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes or modifications. Unless there's an objection, the agenda will stand as approved, approved as presented, rather. It is approved. No proclamations tonight. You're spared. Presentations, Chamber of Commerce report. Tracy Lyons, come on down. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'll let Nicholas get settled. Of course. Yeah, I know. No worries. Thank y'all for having me tonight. I just want to first by, start by saying thank you for your support throughout the year. It's been a wonderful year for the chamber and for our business community. I'm here to kind of give you a year in review. But one of the things that I really want to kind of say thank you and point out is that the city of Lexington and all of its council and staff have been so collaborative. And I think one of the things that we really strive for at the chamber is to bring everyone to the table and to collaborate. And I think one of the things that y'all have done really well is to collaborate and to show up and to be there. And I think that means a lot. So I want to say thank you so much for that. Being present and being supportive means a lot. So thank you, thank you. I have a quick little handout that gives you kind of a chamber year in review. So I'm going to pass those around. I don't know. I brought, how many did I bring? Jen has a current tubes. Jen can share as lessly if we need to. Just gives you a brief, just kind of overview and really we handed these out at our annual meeting earlier this month. So there's been a couple of things in the month of November that we've been able to accomplish. So there are a few things that we'll add to this, but this is just a good snapshot. You know, our mission at the chamber is to champion social and economic progress for our community. We do that in a number of ways. Of course, our chamber has been around for 102 years, hard to believe. Um, and it's funny to read and to look back on the earlier minutes and the earlier notions and the things that the chamber was doing. And they're very much still today, relevant today. You know, we, we really, we were founded on promoting neighborliness and that's one of the things that we really still pride ourselves on. It's supporting one another and showing up for one another and making sure that our business community is striving. So talking about membership, our membership is, is really strong. We have 67 new members that have joined in November, a few more this month. We have 513 active members of the chambers. That's the largest that we've had since I've been at the chamber. So that's a, a big strive for us. We were, we're, our goal has been to get to 500. So we were really happy to hit that number. We held 17 ribbon cuttings. We have three more in the month of December scheduled. So lots of fun, new businesses to celebrate. We hosted over 72, 72 events this year and about a 750 attendees at our business after hours, which are held monthly. I know many of you have attended those. One of our biggest things we did this year was host the housing symposium and that was not done alone. That was a collaboration project between, between the three jurisdictions and we really supported and were so helpful, helpful to have all of them at the table. That was a really great, I guess, depiction of what can happen when everyone works together. And it was really cool to see it all come together and the outcome and we're still waiting and we're still working on it. We are going to be hosting three follow-up sessions from the housing symposium, December 1st, 2nd and 3rd. So if you're interested in getting more involved, we'd love to see you at one of those sessions. But the, this kind of just gives you a snapshot of what we do on a daily basis, kind of our communications, our followers, the things we're out there, just kind of getting out in the community. The chamber reaches more than just our members and we say that I wish we didn't have to have membership dues, although it allows us to function and it gives us a budget to work off of. But we really try to serve the greater community. So anytime there is something that we can do to support the growth of the community, we're, we're always willing. On the back, we kind of break down some different areas and these are some of the areas that we've done a lot of work in this year. The first being empowering business growth and learning. One of the big tenants for us is educating our members. We feel that a stronger business can be more successful if they're educated from the get-go. So we really strive to connect our members with positive resources, good educational opportunities. Whether that's funding, whether that's business planning, whether that's marketing, anything they need to get started. So we have a number of events throughout the year that kind of rally around that. We also just do some simple things like AI, learning about AI and how to use it, how to use marketing, how to use social media. New headshots for your staff, things like that. Civic and workforce engagement is of course still a hot topic. Just this week, we hosted the seventh or the eighth graders from both of our local middle schools here in Lexington at the high school. We did a career fair with them. It was really fun. It was kind of like a worlds of work. We did not only the, just the trades at the CTE center, but we included all of the other kind of elective classes. So photojournalism, marketing, healthcare wellness. And it was just amazing to see the students and doing hands-on activities and how excited they got just to learn what they could do at that next level when they get to high school. So it was really fun. We also do a lot with internships. We partner with VTOP, which is our new, one of our state funding agencies to just really push the internship model. And not only internships, but apprenticeships and work-based learning opportunities. I mean, there's so many things out there and I think it's really hard for businesses to know where to start. And we're really that first entry level to get them connected with students. So we're happy to always be doing that. Government roundtables are always a, a hot topic as well as our candidates forum. We hosted several of those this year. And then just really celebrating our community and connection. That's ribbon cuttings. That's all of the signature events we do. Hosted the president's panel again this year, which has been really popular, bringing the four universities together. We hosted a blueprint Virginia tour, which actually in a couple of weeks will present to the new governor. We've been part of that. It's really been nice to have rural Virginia represented at the state level. And so it's, it's just, it's nice to know and let our members know that their voice matters. When it comes to state matters, when it comes to local matters, but we, it's always our goal to strive to connect them there. So this is just kind of a snapshot and we're excited for some new things to come. This was a big year for the chamber. We moved offices, which was really great. We are excited next year to open that space for some more co-working space, some opportunities for members to gather and just have workshops and, and do more. I think that, that just presence of a strong business community is really important. We're excited for the VA 250 year. We have a lot of fun things planned, including the civics fee, which will kick us off in the beginning of the year with our seventh graders. A number of other events kind of throughout the year we're working on, but I just want to say thank y'all and give you a kind of an, an update. But any questions about the year?
Thank you, Tracy. Members, council have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I would just want to thank you. I mean, you do great work all around the year, but that, uh, the rocks to roof symposium was really.
Yeah.
Very well done.
Good. Thank you so much. Yes. And it wasn't done alone, but we were happy to be, to be a host of it for sure. Yeah.
Looking forward to the follow-up sessions to see what comes from that.
Yeah, we are too.
Yeah. It's also great to see that the members in the Chamber of Commerce are expanding and that there's increased community involvement and engagement.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that and our new members.
Can you talk just a little bit about the interaction? You mentioned the middle schoolers at the high school for that career, but their other thing, um, is there one that you do at the high school as well that's a?
So this one was at the high school this week and we moved it up. We, so with the seventh graders, we've done career fest at the horse center. And we've taken them offsite to the horse center to do kind of a world's of work, like, you know, just learning from our businesses, what opportunities are out there. And then this week we took our eighth graders to the high school and they really, I mean, this is the first time they've been able to host them in the new innovation center. And so that's why we tried it, because we wanted them to get excited and get comfortable, you know, walking those halls and thinking, hey, this is going to be me next year, right? And then it's part of their whole learning experience and not something additional. And that was really exciting to see, kind of, they were all just like in awe of they could do this and they could learn about this and do robotics, but also take a small animal class. And it was, it was cool to see. It was, yeah. So a little bit of both. We're doing kind of the, starting, um, and we're doing the 21st century grant, which is also after school. Students, and that's been really interesting as well, because you just, it's all about career pathways. And we're just showing them and exposing them to as many opportunities as they can, so that they ask more questions and get curious, which is fine.
Excellent. Any other questions from council members? Chuck?
I'll just pile on and say thanks for all the activities that y'all do in, in business after hours and introducing the people and the places that are part of the entire community, but more business driven. But it, it, that's helpful for getting out and about in, in the county. The question I had was, um, chamber members by location, you have Lexington, is that the city? Would that city or is that the mailing?
This is, yeah, this is by the, by kind of zip code, I would say like two, four, four, five, zero, but also their address is Lexington and not right Rockbridge County or Buena Vista, Glasgow, Goshen. So that is a little skewed because that's in and around Lexington and that shows kind of where the business hub is. I would say the Lexington addresses are closer to like the 240, like actual Lexington. It's probably about half our members though. I mean, it really is a heavy percentage that are in the city.
Okay.
Um, and they either live here or they work here, you know, which is interesting to see.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
Trace, other question?
No question. Just a comment.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Oh, thank you.
All done to whoever designed it.
Good. Well, and I will, I will do a shout out. One of our interns put this together. We have two wonderful interns from Washington and Lee, and they're part of the work study based program. And one of them, this was one of her projects this fall and she did a wonderful job with only a few edits from me. It's good.
Which, uh, who was that?
Claire. Claire Hutchison. Yeah.
Want to give credit where credit's due, because Amelia had spent some time with you.
We've had some wonderful interns. We have been very, very fortunate and it's amazing to see what, when, when you use your interns, what they're capable of. So they've been, they've been wonderful.
Turn, turn them loose and they can impress you.
To a small staff, it helps. It's great.
Well, exceedingly grateful for you making some time. Please tell your family thank you for sharing you with us. Thank you for modeling the best use of the microphone. So all of council will use it effectively and less of our participants. And lastly, thanks for your leadership in getting together, as you mentioned, community and collaboration. But during the time that I've lived in Lexington, the past almost 30 years, the chamber and tourism and Main Street Lexington didn't mesh and work collaboratively as well as I perceive they are now. So thank you for being, I perceive a leader in making that happen and getting the results speak for themselves. So thank you very, very much. Keep up the enthusiasm and the energy and come back and see us anytime.
Of course. Thank y'all. Tomorrow's Pink Friday. So shop local and wear your pink. We have a cash mob at 3:30 if you want to join us. Should be fun.
Everybody know what cash mob is?
Come shop. The surprise is at the Shenandoah attic.
Don't, hopefully Deb and Jerry aren't watching.
I don't know if they're tuning in. If so, surprise. Thank y'all so much.
Thanks, Tracy. Next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 26 first quarter financial report. Jen Bell, come on down. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening. Using the microphone too.
Proud of you. Good.
So tonight I wanted to share with you the first quarter report for FY 26. As I said in my memo to council, um, it's really too early in the year to make any bold statements about how we're going to end up. But the first quarter is tracking along as we normally do in the first quarter and pretty close to budget. So quickly I'll just review some of the items that are not looking like they're close to budget right now. So in the general fund revenues, that would be the property taxes, which of course are due December 5th. So by the time we look at our second quarter report, we'll be in much better shape. The other two are miscellaneous and recovered costs. And under miscellaneous, that includes the county revenue sharing payment, which is received in January. And the recovered cost, the largest contributor there is the, um, the payment from Rockbridge County for our fire services, which also comes in at the end of the year. Looking at expenditures. Um, just looking at it from a high level, you'll probably notice non-departmental. That includes our debt service, which is heavy loaded in the front of the year. We pay about one and a half million dollars out in debt service in the first quarter. And, um, and then this is also where we're showing the funds that have flowed through the general fund to the capital projects fund for reimbursements from the bond for city hall renovations. I can pause for questions on the general fund if there's any.
Anyone? Keep on trucking.
All right.
Thank you.
So moving along to the, the school fund, I, I noted in the memo, but I think it's worth repeating. If you look at the federal categorical revenue for FY 26, we've collected only 4%. That is not low because we won't be receiving our federal funds. We, we have every reason to believe we still will. It's just largely those are reimbursement grants. And so we'll see them come in later in the year after we've spent the funds. Their expenditures over at the school board are, are looking good as we would expect. Operations and maintenance is an area that also has their expenses front loaded. So we had some one-time payments right at the beginning of the fiscal year, which made that skew. Any questions on the school board? All right. Stormwater fund. This is the first time we've had this and, um, it's the revenue side is looking, um, as we would expect, as we predicted we would. So that's, um, that's very helpful. We're also seeing some revenues from the bond proceeds. Which may be moved. Um, I think we were going to keep those all in the general fund. So sorry, that's an aside. And then on the expenses, we have not yet started the, um, the projects for which we borrowed the money. So that's why our expenses. So that's why our expenses look incredibly low. Questions on stormwater? Okay, utility fund is, is doing well for the first time, I think maybe since I've been here. We are meeting our goal for the first quarter on revenues. So that's very promising. Hopefully that will continue the next three quarters. On the expense side, um, like I noted in the report, if you look at administration, that's at 48%. So I have asked Patrick Madigan, the director to take a look and he and I are going to work through that. I believe that some software purchases were miscoded and they're supposed to be under capital projects, but I need to confirm that with him. Questions on utilities?
I do have a question on utilities. You were, um, made note that the BACCO purchase was being paid in full from utilities. Does that make sense? I mean, and, or if we turn out fine on the general, can we fund, can we take half the money from there like originally planned?
Yes, and, and that would be my proposal to do that. And if we can't release the funds that are frozen right now, I would recommend that we set up a, an agreement between the general fund and the utility fund to pay for usage when we use it for general fund projects.
Yeah, just seems easier if you can just take
Yeah, that would be much easier.
So you are, that you are planning to do that if it works out?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I had a couple of questions. One was related to last meeting, uh, there was some funding that we were, we were undercharged that we're going to have to pay, pay out. Is that out of the utility fund or is that?
It is, yes.
Okay. Is that reflected here?
No, it'll be on the second quarter report.
Okay.
And it's approximately $62,000, I think was the total on that.
And then the other question I had was, uh, what, what are other revenues? What, what sources do other revenues come from?
Other revenues? That includes, um, like when they have to hook up a new, is it called a tap fee?
Okay.
And that sort of thing.
Thank you.
All right. Lastly, we have the equipment replacement fund and, um, Leslie stole my thunder.
Sorry.
So I have nothing further to add, but hell, welcome questions.
Thank you, Jen. Members of council have any questions on the entire report? And, um, relative to, um, equipment replacement, uh, the things that have been ordered are, are things coming in in a timely manner? Or, because I know for a while they're, you order things and you're having to wait 18, 24, 36 months or, or
It's gotten better. It's still not great though, but the, um, the police vehicle that arrived, I think we ordered that about six months ago. So it, um, wasn't terrible.
Right. Okay. Very good. Very good thing. Any questions? Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Good work. Uh, next item on the agenda is our public hearing. Hearing and consideration of an ordinance to amend article 13, signs and article 20 definitions of the city of Lexington zoning ordinance. Come on down, Arnie. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as you know, this was before you back in August and you had sent it back to the planning commission. You generally, um, were in support of it, but you asked for some additional information to specifically focus on hours that the sign may be lit. Color of the letters, removing the canopy sign allowance in the C2 zoning district and any other regulation needed to allow canopy signs. And again, canopy signs were a proposal for one particular property owner. They wanted to have the individual channel letters placed on top of a canopy. We don't allow internally illuminated signs in the C1 district, which is the historic downtown district, except for one neon sign, no greater than three square feet in size. So we had to find a way to put the new allowance in for canopy signs. So this went back to the planning commission for, I believe, four meetings. So the rest of your, um, packet on page 35, that's just sort of additional information as we were going from one meeting to the other. As staff was trying to answer questions for them. And then ultimately at their meeting on October 23rd, they did recommend approval. But for the six things that are listed on page 36, I'm going to go through this quickly and please interrupt with questions. I know it's been a while since you've had canopy signs before you. And the first one is to allow internally illuminated canopy signs for buildings up to three stories in height, that they would then have a 7.5 square foot display allowance and that the letters, individual channel letters, height could be up to 12 inches tall. And then for those buildings that are greater than three stories, they could have 16 inch letters and 10 square feet total. They decided not to recommend a limitation on the color of the channel letters. You all, I think had a preference, generally speaking, for white or warm white. They thought it because of one particular comment that came up during one of the public hearings, to allow ARB to have the flexibility as they deem fit. And so there's some discretion there. And then another item would be to limit the channel letters to open face style only with or without a diffuser. And there are four different types of channel letters as we learned. Open face is one, and then with or without a diffuser, again, gives a little bit of, um, design, um, flexibility. And then to limit each of the letters to no more than 800 lumens. And that to limit the warmth of the letters to no more than 2,700 K. We do have some visuals if you wanted to see those. But that is the recommendation of planning commission. Just to go over to the next page to quickly go through this again, please let me know if you have questions. So on page 38 of your packet, the bulk of the changes are included in the seat, sorry, in the C1 zoning district sign table. So the recommendation was to change the awning sign, or sorry, the canopy to awnings and then have a new line item for canopy, where canopy signs would be limited to buildings that have at least 40 feet of frontage. So you wanted to allow canopy signs, but have some limitations so they wouldn't proliferate. This is one of those regulations to accomplish that. And then in the area, I've already mentioned those just a minute ago, the 12 inch letters or the, um, 16 inch letters. So I'm going to go over that again. And then the overall height cannot be more than 15 feet off of grade. That's common for wall signs and other signage. And then the other thing to note is note number three at the very bottom of the page that will follow the table, that open face channel letters in the C1 zoning district are allowed with or without a diffuser, 800 aluminum lumens max per channel letter and a 2,700 K maximum color temperature. Now, one thing that I have to admit that I realized after we put this together, the 2,700 K makes sense on a white light, but I'm not sure how that gets applied to a red light or a blue light if those other lights are allowed. But we'll have to work through that, um, unless you want to change that in your, or in your consideration this evening. There's not much change that's to C2 zoning district, which is on your next page. And we did have to add, um, excuse me, a sign canopy definition. And then also new graphics for that portion. That's in the definition section of zoning ordinance. The rest of the photographs that you see that follow are the same ones that you've seen before. On page 45 of your overall packet, the applicant did have to request the pine commission put up two different mock-up signs up on and took photographs. So what you're seeing there, even though they were, the way they were presented, it's not easy to tell, but those are two different sized signs that were mocked up. And then you have a whole lot of minutes from a number of meetings, um, to get to the recommendation that you have before you tonight. And we do have a draft ordinance attached. Happy to answer any questions.
Trying to remember, um, is there any like time limit on when the lights can be displayed? Like there than any, I think maybe we discussed that a little bit, but I don't know that we ever.
Thanks for bringing that up because I failed to mention that during the discussion with planning commission, because a couple of realizations. One question was, what's the typical lumen output of a downtown street lamp? And the answer came back from Polo Works, about 1,300 lumens. So there's already ambient light happening. And because there was a limitation on the maximum number of lumens per letter, that they didn't feel the need in the downtown district where we have more of our urban style development, that there was a need to shut the lights off after a certain period of time on the canopy signs.
Thanks.
And I'll just say, that, that a great question on that. Um, one of the things that I think is really cool about our downtown is that a lot of the storefronts are lit up. I mean, I'm talking the windows, the storefronts. Um, and it, even when they're closed, it's still a welcoming downtown. And, and so again, we talked about the hotel and their whole goal of attracting the folks that might be checking in at 11 o'clock or one o'clock and wanting them to be able to, you know, find the gin, uh, the first time around the block. Um, but also it's a welcoming downtown. If any of our other businesses happen to use these kinds of signs and if they have them on, it just, it's vibrant. So, um, good question and I'm, I like the, the answer kind of that we can, we can probably allow that. So thank you.
Originally we were looking to the applicant to provide some information on the color temperature, uh, in lumens. And then, but we never received that information from them. Have you had any follow-up conversation just to make sure that these are in line? We were kind of going off of other ordinances and, um, day, information we had researched.
We were trying to pattern the, the regulations to the proposal, but the proposal was not always easy to receive in the sense that they were having a hard time, I think, with their sign company. So we never really received an accurate proposal of what they intended to have. So we did have to look to other sources for lumens as an example. Um, and over the last couple of planning commission meetings and also with this meeting tonight, they were made aware of the meeting in the packet and we've never received any additional sign details. Okay, thank you.
Arnie, I, that brings up a good point. I, I think we're, planning commission has recommended this, these changes to the zoning. It's not being done for that sign alone. And we're not, I think that was one of the interesting points of your discussion and planning commission when I sat in that night, that, that this isn't being tailored exactly for the gin hotel.
Right.
Yeah. So.
Right, there is an allowance there, um, for other canopies as long, but with limitations, as mentioned. And one of the major ones is going to be the building has to have a frontage of at least 40 feet. So it's not going to proliferate because there are a lot of buildings that just simply don't have 40 feet of frontage.
Yep.
And don't have canopies.
Yeah.
Arnie, in the pictures with the Benecasas, um, that is a, a mock-up of the size that is to go there. And they're all the same, it's just different positions?
They're two different sizes. And again, the way they sort of photo dumped it, I couldn't pull it apart.
Okay.
So it's hard to tell, but sometimes you can pick out from the spacing on the railing behind it. You can sort of tell when it's a little bit bigger. Um, and they were also trying to give a perspective a little bit further back and a little bit closer. But you do see two different sizes and I think those sizes are in the application or in the staff report. Uh, believe planning commission actually recommends some slightly different than the sizes that you see. That was just a sort of a starting point.
Got you. Just an idea what it might look like being on top of the canopy.
And that's also, I think, what got us to recommending larger sign size and letter size based on the height of the building and the number of stories.
Right. Very good. Very good. Any other questions for Arnie? Arnie, thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on this matter and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance proposed. Not seeing anyone or hearing anyone, I will close the public hearing at eight 32 and ask for council's consideration. I make a motion to approve zoning ordinance 2025 dash zero three to allow internally illuminated canopy signs, uh, to be permitted in the C1 and C2 zoning districts as presented. Second. Have a motion and dueling second and would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Ms. Strong. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much and wanted to, uh, make, make a statement regarding this. Um, regarding this matter, I want to thank the planning commission members for their professionalism and thoughtful work. Uh, this group exemplifies civility and teamwork. There are members who did not think this type of sign requested belongs downtown. However, when council requested they review and bring forward a suitable ordinance, they rose to the occasion and brought us to where we are tonight. And I believe this work shows our commitment to listening, asking questions and seeking solutions in support of our neighbors and our business community, as was pointed out in prior conversations. I want to offer and congratulate all involved, especially staff for guiding us all through this as we, um, I don't know that we've ever created a, a new element of an ordinance, uh, like this before. And, uh, to all of, uh, the planning commission and to all of council for your commitment to thoughtful collaborative work. The next item on our agenda, consideration of minutes, and those were in your packet. Is there any objection to approval of the minutes as presented? They are approved. Citizens' remarks and comments. Not aware of anyone who wants to speak to council tonight. Clearly seven o'clock meetings are better attended than eight o'clock meeting. Uh, you got to prove in the pudding here. And I will close the citizens' remarks and comments at eight 34 and ask for council's consideration of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. Any dis, or no discussion and roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Not aware of any unfinished business? Reports and communications, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith?
Uh, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, uh, last meeting received a presentation from Columbia Gas, uh, proposal to collect, uh, the methane that's being produced in the old landfill, phase one, uh, and pipe it into their, uh, gas line that runs through the property. It's a convenient spot, hence the attractive, uh, option for, for our landfill. And, um, we'll see where it goes from there, but nothing more to really report on that.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
What, what would the use be?
It'll go into the main Columbia gas line. So.
As I recall, the representative from Columbia Gas identified that they would, uh, build this, uh, production facility that would capture the methane and they have a transmission line very close to, um, uh, the landfill. And it would just, if you will, slide on down or flow on down into their, uh, larger transmission, um, uh, center in Buena Vista.
What a great idea.
Good, good opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Main Street Lexington, Mr. Smith.
Main Street Lexington. Uh, main street is in the final planning stages for next Friday's candlelight procession and the Christmas parade on, uh, December 5th. For the parade, registration fees go up on Saturday and all applications must be received by Friday, November 28th. Uh, the holiday church open house is slated for Friday, December 19th. Skylar Daniel from Manley Memorial is helping main street to coordinate this event. Holiday business promotions are going well. We've already had to reorder cards for the shop small sweepstakes. We're aiming to publish our annual holiday gift guide on the main street Lexington website on Friday. We're planning to, um, I'm sorry, we're planning a special shop small Saturday promotion with some live entertainment fun activities for the afternoon of December 6th. And this will take place of the open late shopping campaign. Uh, we're also promoting nationwide initiatives like pink Friday that Tracy mentioned, uh, which is tomorrow and small business Saturday on the 29th. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Exciting times leading up to, uh, the holidays.
Uh, one note, uh, we wanted to, we also welcomed, uh, Siobhan Deeds as a, as a new main street board member.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Planning commission, Ms. Strong.
Planning commission met last Thursday on November 13th and we approved unanimously approved a certificate of appropriateness for new signage for anytime fitness at 439 East Nelson Street. And then we had a discussion on the green infrastructure chapter of the comprehensive plan. It's part of our five-year review of the comprehensive plan. And that's all I have. And we will not meet next Thursday.
Good to know. Good work. Good work. Tourism board, Mr. Betts.
Enjoy sweeping views of Blue Ridge Mountains in this walkable Virginia town was a headline of an article which can be found on various sources, including Yahoo, AOL and Southern Living. It describes some of the great experiences you can have here in Lexington. Uh, also I know there was a question about occupancy not too long ago. Occupancy for lodging across Rockbridge area has increased by 20% since the last year, uh, in the month of October. That, that a report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Betts? Mr. Smith?
Not a question and add, um, luminary nights at Natural Bridge State Park, uh, second, third.
luminary nights at Natural Bridge State Park, uh, second, third, um, before I forget about it, second, third, uh, weekends in December, um, Cedar Creek Trail is illuminated along pathway, the bridge is lit. And if you haven't been to Natural Bridge for a while, this is a good time to, to check it out because it really adds to the experience. And there will be horse drawn carriage rides on the two Sundays, uh, but you have to do and pay for those in advance.
Thank you, sir. Bravo, Mr. Ziegler.
No report.
Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Threshold had a meeting on eleven nineteen yesterday. Um, threshold continued to review and score the applications using their housing scenarios while discussing repair priorities. Um, how to deal with the situations where the homeowner has property rental income and the need to gather more information about those rental arrangements from the application and interview and from the interview process as a program does not include rental properties, strictly homeowner residences. Also identifying areas to ensure fair scoring consistency, how to, how repair lists grow once a contractor's, uh, inspection takes place or having to bring certain things up to code as well as repairing the initial problem as well as source out the rest of the problem and the resulting damages that are incurred from the original problem. We explored options for how to handle situations where repairs exceed the value of a property, particularly focusing on catastrophic issues that could require residents to temporarily relocate. We reviewed the program's guidelines, which allow for work to be stopped if the scope goes beyond intentions and/or costs exceed program parameters as well as repairs exceeding property values and discuss the need to inform a homeowner, homeowners about our limitations. Explored options for temporary relocation assistance during the rehab, including short-term relocation costs as a placeholder subject to board approval and plan to finalize the development of the application by January fifteenth or before. Uh, considered how to address cases where homeowners may have known about issues before the project began, uh, potentially leading to disputes about responsibility for the problems. Emergency situations could arise during the course of the program. Considered how to fund and finesse those in regard to the work schedules already going forward and the funding. Noting the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar program budget and considering setting aside five thousand dollars of that for emergencies as well as a small amount of carryover funds in the threshold prior budget. Uh, March first is the application deadline. If we find it necessary because of lack of participation or we still have substantial uncommitted funds, then we can arrange to accept additional applications on a first come, first served basis after March one. We discussed applicants who may receive services from the Department of Social Services and if there could be any social service eligibility implications in regard to a homeowner loan agreement program. We have requested the information on that and we're waiting for their response. The next matters at the, at that meeting include, it, at the next meeting include finalizing advertising of the program, the steps in the process of approving applications and the virtual attendance guidelines for city government meetings. We're confident in the meeting, uh, that's coming up on December tenth. That we'll talk about deadlines versus our agenda to-do list before we rolling this out in January. Basically what that means, that that meeting on December tenth, we're going to stay there as long as it takes until we're finished.
As advertised.
As advertised.
Fair thought.
Is that that? Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Alexander? Going to withhold food and water? As long as it takes? Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, for my report, just wanted to, um, uh, I'll say gloat. I was invited by the, uh, troop twenty-nine to come and talk about government and elections and um, importance of voting to the, um, uh, young men and women of, uh, the troop. And it was a very lively crowd. I, uh, was, uh, on the agenda after, uh, learning how to fold properly the American flag. So, um, they were pretty wired and inspired, but it was super cool and they had great questions and, um, I'm excited about the, the future um, with the work that, um, uh, the troop master is doing with the, uh, the young scouts. Uh, Nathan Straub's son, um, Henry, I believe, it was there and, um, uh, contributed, uh, to the uh, occasion in the meeting and, um, very proud of the work that they're doing and, um, uh, some of our staff is participating in that. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, in the, tonight's packet, I included a memorandum on the, the goal status for FY twenty-six. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have or take any suggestions or guidance that you want to give regarding the, the status of those goals. But, uh, another purpose for that, uh, memorandum was to, uh, ask for council's direction on whether council wants to hold a goal-setting session in January or early February. Of course, for, for benefit of the budget process, it will be helpful to have it in January. Uh, and in fact, earlier in January is, is preferable if that is your, um, desire. I, I don't anticipate substantial changes to the goals, but that, that would be the reason why we would have the meeting and make sure that that's correct. Uh, we just would want to get that on the calendar as soon as possible if that is your, your desire and, and weave that into the budget preparation process. Uh, earlier today, I was going over the, uh, two thousand twenty-six council meetings with, uh, clerk, Council Kate Beard, and she helpfully pointed out that uh, our first meeting in January is, uh, uh, the first Thursday of, of the month, and that is January first. Uh, and so I suspect we will not want to have a meeting that night as it's a holiday. Uh, which that might help us reorganize some of our, uh, meeting schedule for the month of January. It may be advisable to meet on the fifteenth and of course, the twenty-ninth, we have a, a fifth Thursday in the month. Uh, so we have some degrees of freedom on, on what we want to do in terms of your January meeting. I might suggest that we consider taking, uh, one of those meetings and converting it into a work session uh, to go over the goal-setting session instead of having a business meeting, uh, and, and just amend the, the calendar. Keep the meeting on January fifteenth as a regular business meeting and then either having uh, the work session on say, January eighth or January twenty-second or doing it another night of the week, uh, in those weeks. But that's up to council to, to decide. So whatever your pleasure is, we could also do a, a, a weekend as we have in the past, a, a Saturday afternoon or something to that effect, as long as we try and avoid the Martin Luther King Day weekend. Uh, one thing to keep in mind, um, as you consider whether to have a goal-setting session, um, we may try and schedule, the mayor and I were discussing today, the possible benefit of having a, uh, work session in December, uh, to go over a couple of items, uh, particularly if we want to discuss the charter and institutional creep, uh, would be the two topics that the, that the mayor has proposed. Um, we may want to give some thought to when that work session would be in December. Um, we also know that, uh, December twenty-fifth is a Thursday, but we're, rule that out as well. So. Have, have to answer any questions about that.
Can we, can we send out like some, uh, those like little survey things like to kind of, for, to kind of gauge?
We can do that.
Yep. Do a little poll.
I'll just suggest on the, I'm sorry, the goal setting. I don't mind if we have a work session on that, but I, actually after reading through, I think that I don't think they're going to change substantially. I would, my preference would be to dig into some of them, particularly the first one on VDOT. Um, and work on that to move it forward as far as us setting our expectations for it to and, uh, to relay or to work with EDA on.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I concur and, and, um, talking with the city manager and, and scheduling that. I would say typically when we have an election and a new, potentially new council members every two years, we have a retreat and solidify those things. I think there's a tremendous amount of value in exactly what you're talking about. Make sure we're all focused on the things that we need to be focused on and remind us all and to give clear direction to staff related to that. So sorry to be redundant, but exactly what you said, um, said a different way. Um, I'm hopeful that we can, the first week or two, find a, an afternoon for a couple hours, uh, if that makes sense for folks. Um, are there any days that are just absolutely, uh, I mean, don't want to be in conflict with planning, but uh, are there other commitments that council members have? Five, five-thirty better start times so staff doesn't have to hang around quite as long?
I mean, I don't have my calendar in front of me. The, the earlier it is, the harder it is for me, but, um, that's why I was asking if we could send out a poll because I don't have my.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, I just, you know, if John has, you know, commitments Tuesday nights and those are not, that's what I'm looking for.
Definitely want to work, tell me now and.
Well, included. And, and there's nothing magical about Thursdays. It could be Monday through Wednesday as well. Fridays, you go, go visit the, uh, wine shops and, um, have happy hour. On your end. Yes. Well, that's the old school when we started eight o'clock, but that's a whole different story. So, um, and then, um, relative to, um, the other work session, uh, we, uh, David had brought up wisely, and we'll talk about it under new business per se, but the, uh, housekeeping with, um, uh, David had brought up the school board is no longer appointed, it's now elected. And so we need to update our charter. And this is a great time and I would like for all of us to lock eyes on the charter and go through and understand and shape all of our expectations, whether it's approval of the police chief, um, or any of the other details that we're all more acquainted with that. I think a work session would be the appropriate spot. Um, have a burning desire in December in the event, uh, um, delegate Austin's office says, I need it January one. If it's anytime in January, we may bump it and have a little bit of, uh, not quite a sense of urgency. If that makes sense.
I'd love, I'd love to get it done personally. I think the calendar is going to turn. It's, I, I, I think that Jeremy and Tom have done some good work on it already, laying out some, some of the things that we need to discuss. And I think if we all lock in and, and do our homework ahead of time, that we can accomplish a lot and in a work session in December and hand that off to delegate Austin's office and.
Absolutely. And relative to the institutional creep, um, I think this council owes it to our community and our neighbors to, um, drill down and understand what we're willing to, uh, tolerate or accept or how we define creep. Um, I think there's some other biz, buildings that are either under contract for new owners um, or have already sold. I'm not sure of the exact status, but, uh, I think it's important for us to help the prospective new owners to understand, uh, wh- what the expectations are relative to approval or expansion of Washington Lee or VMI or Southern Virginia or some other higher, uh, education entity would want to do something downtown. Our, our feelings or position on that. So those are the two items that, uh, again, we'll, we'll find a doodle, um, preferably in, um, uh, in, um, December, uh, to work on those. So. Any questions?
We have, uh, comments on this. Should we send them to Tom?
Uh, what is?
On the goal setting.
Yes.
If we have any thoughts after a little reflection, reflective reading, we send that to you.
Yes, please.
Yes, send those into Tom. Is that the end of your report?
Yes.
I'm going to rewind a little bit because I, I missed two items that I had written down, but forgot to, uh, bring forward. Uh, we earlier received, uh, well, went to recognize our, our friend Fred Kirchner, who, uh, passed away and created vacancy on the joint board um, of building code appeals. And, uh, we have an application from, uh, General Dallas Clark to fill the unexpired term, which goes to June thirty, twenty twenty-seven, but would start, uh, at the approval of, uh, this council, only to be presumptuous. So bring that name forward and, um, uh, ask for your consideration of appointing Dallas Clark, uh, to the joint board of building code appeals, uh, with the term concluding June thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Thank you.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote. Ms. Strong, Mr. Betts.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Driscoll.
Aye.
And Ms. Alexander. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much and thank you to General Clark, uh, for contributing and, uh, if, if he gets activated, that one doesn't meet, uh, only as needed. Uh, the others, I would be remiss if I didn't publicly extend my appreciation to, uh, Bob Hopkins and the, uh, band of uh, folks that, uh, came together and put together a beautiful parade on a very chilly day. There was no precipitation. And, uh, I think it was just an awesome experience, a beautiful message by General Furness and a great way to honor our veterans. So, uh, thank you all for your participation and support. And especially to Public Works and, uh, Fire and Rescue who were there, uh, supporting us, um, through the day and um, everyone retreated quickly after the remarks and, uh, I think it was the fifth graders, uh, did a beautiful job with their, uh, singing. So great, great, uh, Americana performance and, uh, time. So, uh, thank you, Bob, for organizing all of that. Jeremy, your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
It's weak, but, uh, but we can hear you.
Okay, well.
Speak, speak, uh, put on your preacher voice.
Well, we'll do, we'll do my best. Um, just a couple of things working on, uh, Tom and I are going to be talking about a, a proposed Dominion franchise coming up. They've, uh, requested a renewal of their franchise and so been looking at some, uh, examples so that Tom and I can go over some issues we want to address in the franchise agreement. Um, also looking at an alley vacation issue, Tom and I are, well, it came up through Larry Mann on Henry Street. And, uh, so that's something that may be forthcoming, looking at the procedure for that and starting to draft some documents. Uh, if it's city council's pleasure to, to vacate an alley, uh, that has, has been requested. Obviously been working on the, uh, charter amendments, uh, and, and there's a process there. So we can talk about that when we get to new business, but as far as the, the schedule and the sequencing of things, we do need to be mindful of our need to have a public hearing and advertise that prior to being able to submit, uh, anything to the general assembly. And I'm trying to schedule and, and, um, I, by no means am I meaning to imply that it is Brightspeed's fault. We just have not been able to catch up to go over some of the details. I think we just need to have a conversation. Exchanging emails just hasn't made the progress. So trying to set that up to hopefully, you know, make some progress on the lease and get that, uh, hopefully behind us. Uh, with that, happy to answer any questions you may have and, and try to, hopefully you can hear me.
Were, were you able to discover the new point of contact for Brightspeed?
Yep. Yeah, we've, we've exchanged emails and, um, he's been responsive. Um, we just, there's like a, I don't, I want to say an empath. We're just at a point where I think a conversation is needed rather than email. So I emailed him and asked about, uh, just set aside some time for us to talk.
Thanks, Jeremy. Jeremy, in relation to that building, is it still for sale and are you dealing with a realtor with the lease or it's a Brightspeed individual?
Brightspeed individual, and I have not asked him if it is still on the market, but I, I mean, I could do that, of course.
I, I just, it seemed like we were talking to the realtors before and that was not the right path. So, um, thank you.
And it may just come up in our conversation if and when, well, I assume we'll get one scheduled and, you know, I'll, I'll bring it up in conversation if just out of curiosity, frankly.
Thank you, sir. Greatly appreciate it. Any other questions, Ms.?
One on the Dominion franchise agreement. Are you working to include some language to formalize them burying the lines?
That is one of the things, yeah, Tom and I will talk about, um. And, and there's a couple of ways to address that and, and I have not looked at zoning or subdivision ordinances to see if we've got anything in there because you could, uh, way I've seen it handled in other occasions, for example, is to require them to bury all new lines uh, as required by subdivision ordinances or zoning ordinances. So that's, that's one way I've seen it addressed. We can certainly address it in the franchise agreement and, and we will do so. I just want to figure out what the best way to do that is. Other things to think about or, or, you know, there was some discussion earlier about the brightness of streetlights. I have seen that be an issue in other jurisdictions and, uh, a lot, you know, what degree of control does a locality have to give some direction that a street light is too bright or neighbors are complaining about it, something needs to be relocated. We want to make sure that's addressed. Um, and, and obviously the, the, uh, digging, tearing down, um, a pole. poles, or or I think there was some email traffic about some poles being left up too long. We can put in some requirements for repairs, remediations, and and taking down poles promptly. That that can be limited a little bit because of what other, you know, does does Brightspeed, for example, or Rana or somebody else have lines on the pole that have to be moved or relocated before a pole can come down? Dominion may not have complete control over that type of situation. But again, I've seen situations where poles stay up too long, and they're essentially abandoned in place, and we don't want that to happen.
Well, great, because apparently some of the lights that Dominion has has installed recently have been very bright, according to some of the neighbors, so.
Okay, so that's interesting. I've seen that in other jurisdictions.
Yeah.
And actually, but those were not Dominion. That was AFCO, I believe.
I guess that begets the conversation of what a new line is. How do you define a new line? But we'll let you work through those details. There was a piece of like 230 feet of something, am I misremembering? From a historical standpoint, like the past 15 years of.
Burying it?
Yes.
Yeah, I I don't know that I've I've been able to discern if our current franchise with Dominion has the ability for us to ask them to bury 200 feet a year with a three-year look back. And we haven't buried lines, I'm told, since 2011. That may or may not be true, but that's a recollection of Scott Dameron, our very capable and institutional knowledgeable Deputy Public Works Director. So we're going to try and figure that out because we're trying to work with Washington and Lee and then the other business owners along the 100 block of of West Washington and and Lee from Nelson to to Washington to get those lines buried and then and then start a progression of continuing to bury using that franchise requirement.
Yeah. And just interested, the three-year look back, I don't think was have, I can't remember the, reading the document at this point, but if it's not indicated as a three-year look back, they owe us, you know, because we didn't, we, because we accumulated it for several years. I hope that I'm, I'm happy for the city to take the position that we're still do those several hundred feet each year. So but looking at the new franchise agreement, I understand if a three-year look back or use it or lose it is written into it, but.
Because because it's, it's not just an aesthetic issue, it's security as far as not losing your power during the windstorms or bad weather.
Exactly, exactly. Any other questions for the city attorney? Thank you, Jeremy. New business, city charter, housekeeping, and other possible amendments? Call on city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the memorandum, this is an issue that Councilmember Ziegler brought up because, of course, our charter is inconsistent with our practice of now electing members of the Board of Education. And so that caused us as staff to, City Attorney Kate Beard and myself went through the charter and identified a number of areas where either something is out of date, no longer consistent, or an opportunity for us to to change the charter. As the city attorney mentioned, and I'll be happy to defer to him and have him correct me, but in order for us to introduce something, make a a formal request to the General Assembly to make an amendment to the charter, we have to have a public hearing. And so the soonest we can do that is in December. The soonest we could probably do that is December 18th in all likelihood. That gets us a little bit into a time crunch because any delegate can introduce a bill like this, and his or her pre-filing deadline date is December 1st to January 14th. So we might have a window. I need to better understand the process. But where we could ask Delegate Austin, for example, we've been in contact with his legislative aide, who's been extraordinarily helpful, Matt Miller. We might be able to get it introduced in in late December, January, if if we do have a public hearing and follow the process that Jeremy will guide us through on December 18th. Having said all that, it may be then advisable if we do want to simply clean up the 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 Board of Education elections that we would narrowly focus in on just that issue. And for anything else that's that we've identified till a future date, or anything else that Jeremy would advise us that we should just clean this up and bolt that on to the to the legislation. But I'd be happy to, Jeremy's done this before, so I'd be happy to defer to him if he has other corrections or suggestions.
Everything, everything was right. We do have to advertise twice before the public hearing. So it's not our our routine one-time advertising for an ordinance. But it's twice, you could literally do it seven and eight days before, seven and nine, seven and 10 days before. So the the two advertisements can be fairly compressed. And then we would have to adopt an ordinance with the language and forward it to to the General Assembly, to Terry Austin's office. And we'll also say, we have the public hearing, and then we forward it to the the General Assembly, and it doesn't get introduced or it fails. We have to start over with the public hearing again, but it would be a year later anyways at that point. So just.
One, one thing I think would be helpful, both for for us, as well as maybe for the General Assembly too, because I guess you just pointed out that things could fail or is to have them separated into these into two categories. One that is like procedurally, this this needs to be done because it's incorrect, like the, like the, like the school board thing. And then have another one that here are some things, I I know this outline, it's outlined in here, but just bifurcate it a little bit and just say, these are the things that need to be done. These are the things that we kind of would suggest are done, but are incorrect. Does that make sense?
I I don't think any of them are urgent to the point of they have to be done in this cycle. I don't know if that answers your question, Nick. I mean, even the.
The way that, I guess, and I appreciate that. I guess the way that I was looking is like the school board, like the school board one, or there's some other ones where like the language was just incorrect about like procedural language in the charter. I think that it'd be great if we could clean those up, that this session, and then the ones that are like maybe more philosophical about like where should the city manager live, the process with the police chief, you know, work on that maybe throughout the year. And then, and then next year, propose those. That would, that would be my my thought personally.
And that gives you more time to obviously ponder and contemplate whether you want to change with regard to the city manager, the city attorney, or the police chief. So I certainly understand.
Yeah, I had listed a couple of the the ones, and it's exactly what you were talking about, Councilmember Metz, which would be the 17.1, which referenced the wrong or outdated section of the Freedom of Information Act. That would be one that's housekeeping. I don't think anyone would object to it. It's just a wrong citation as well as the school board. And so we could, we can explore if we can navigate a path to introduce those for legislation on December 18th. And I heard Councilmember Ziegler say, let's get this done, but then kind of just table the rest of these issues for a future discussion. We can do this next year if that's your pleasure.
Any may have an objection to that?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind. My understanding is that, and I think you just said it too, is that the school board elections are going to happen regardless, that this does not have to be amended. I'd rather do it right and.
Do it all at one time.
And just get it over with, at least have our discussion, because I think there's a couple of issues. I actually think the city manager, the where the city manager lives, that that is a big issue, and I'd like it to be correct.
Let's, I don't think that, I'm disagreeing with that. I think that we should do the ones that are, like, if the school board, anything that is, needs to be changed, I think we should just go ahead and change. And then I agree that we should take our time on anything that is like a discussion, like where the city manager lives, or the stuff about the city attorney or stuff about the police chief. Those are, those may take time, but I don't see any reason not to clean up like some, I think we could do it in two pieces. One, where things need to be changed because they're just incorrect. And then another, where we work, take our time and work through it. So I don't know that we're disagreeing on that. I guess we're just disagreeing on whether we do it at once or we do it in in two pieces.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
You might have an issue of whether your legislator.
Say it again, Jeremy?
You might have an issue of whether your legislator wants to carry two bills in two consecutive years when he's got probably other things to do as well. He he might rather have it all in one bill.
Can we ask him?
Ask him.
We can't, Nick, I I appreciate the your perspective and and your your recommendation. What I'm hearing from your peers is that, I mean, the the primary reason for a hustle on this is because the General Assembly is getting ready to start in January. So if we can meet and lock horns, it it shouldn't take us very long, just a simple work session to determine residency, can't remember the other issues, but the the other pieces and have one bill for Terry Austin to carry forward to the General Assembly. We.
I think it's great. I think it's great if we can come to an agreement on it, that there's like several issues that we may not all come to an agreement on. But, you know, and it's, again, it's, if it was just one philosophical issue, I'd say, I think that, yeah, we probably get it done. But, you know, there may be difference of opinion on several issues, but if that's what we're going to do, that's what we're going to do.
I'm optimistic that there'll be more collaboration because a lot of it, it we could certainly litigate it, but most of it is general housekeeping and and probably a lot of our institutional knowledge with our attorney, his municipal knowledge and how other municipalities are handling this to give some good options for how to set it and move forward.
I guess my my concern is specific, like, let's just take the city manager issue, right? Like, there's three different things that could happen. Like, you could say the city manager has to live in Lexington, the city manager has to live in the Brockbridge area, or the city manager doesn't have to live anywhere at all.
They're required.
Right? Like, I mean, that just, you take that that one issue.
Right.
And I think that's even a complex issue on its own, you know, that has, well, you know.
Well, it's certainly, even the proposed language, it gives us a good starting off point that it is required to live in the city, but under the discretion of council, if it takes a little while to get into the city. The way I look at this is that our voters, our citizens, approved an elected school board in November 2022. It is almost 2026, and we're the council that has not changed our charter. And I think it's kind of a bad look, and I think if it takes a work session to get this ball rolling, we owe it to our citizens to get the ball rolling and to change our charter so that it is accurate. It takes four votes to come to an agreement on something, and if there's disagreement on one of these topics, like a police chief or a city manager's location on where he or she may live, that there may still be disagreement, but if four people agree, then we can move forward with that. And having one work session or having two work sessions, I'm up for it. I think this is a very important priority. Delegate Austin is waiting on this, and I agree that it is not something that you go back each year to say, oh, can you change this? Can you change this? Can you change this? Delegate Austin is waiting for this. I think we try to get it to his office.
I don't, I don't disagree with you about the school board stuff, but that's, that's why I said what I said. Clearly, it looks like, well, I mean, we haven't heard from all the council members, but if we're going to have the work sessions and all of it, then, I mean, I'd like to hear from people that haven't spoken personally. I mean.
I think if there's, I think if expediency makes sense right now from what I'm hearing. If there's one of these that we can't come to a consensus on, we can also, and as Jeremy said, they're not all, they don't all have to be resolved this at now. So, for example, if we lock horns on the where the city manager should live, we don't include it in the amendment that we've put forward.
That's all, yeah, I agree with. That's all I was trying to say.
I think we'll find that we're all going to be probably in agreement with 99% of this, and it shouldn't take a lot of acts of Congress to to make it happen. So.
That will never happen.
Let's get it done best we can. And if we don't get it all done, I'm sure we might be missing a vote on one or two, but get as much done as we can.
Certainly won't let perfection stand in the way of progress, to be sure, to be sure. Any other questions or observations on the charter, housekeeping, and other possible amendments? Jeremy, you content?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Members of council have any other observations? No action to take here. Kate will send us out opportunities to get together and push this forward and get it in Matt Miller's hands. I'm not aware of a closed session request, so we move on to adjournment. And is there any objection to adjourning this meeting? Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Jeremy, enjoy the commute home.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, thank you for guiding us and leading us in the right direction.
My best.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You all do as well.